So we're gonna call the meeting to the Nottingham Board of Select from Monday, August 5th, 2024. We'll start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Mr. Decker.
Did you leave it open just a bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's open to the car.
Okay.
I can understand the fans on loud. Sorry I'm late.
I turned it down, but it's no quieter.
For everybody too, the Town of Nottingham, this Sunday is the annual Blueberry Pancake, which benefits the Nottingham Historical Society. It is from 8:00 AM to 10:30 or so?
Yes.
Right?
Nottingham Square, the schoolhouse.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, but thank you Steve. The Nottingham Square, the schoolhouse. Donations are welcome and a small fee for the pancakes, but they're well worth it. And we'll probably see Steve up there cooking like normal. You will. All right. Good to know. Everybody get a chance to look at the minutes and the actually first the payroll and the manifest.
Make a motion to approve the payroll and manifest for July 22nd and 23rd.
Motion.
August 5th and August 6th.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Steve will second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Steve Welch.
I don't know if we're... Do you guys wanna do the roll calls anymore or just wanna say aye?
I mean, I guess only if there's a contention, we really need to.
That was one of those things I was thinking about on the way here. That's why I was like, you know, we were doing it before because I think we started during COVID or whatever, because everything was being recorded so everybody could know, but...
Well, it still is.
Do you guys have an opinion?
Not a strong one either way.
Yeah.
I think it's...
As long as you note who's recusing or abstaining.
Right.
Or an opposing vote, just for the minutes record.
If we're all...
But if it's unanimous, aye is aye.
Make it easier for the... To do it the roll call way is my question.
Probably.
Well, probably not, because if there's an abstention, that person's gonna say their name.
They're gonna say, "I abstain."
Yeah, or...
Okay. Whatever.
I don't know. It's one of those things. I don't know. It made me think about it today, so I thought I'd just bring it up. All right. Everybody say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approve, find none. Minutes? Any changes or anything for those that maybe wanna talk about?
Two small things. On page 45.
Which minute? Okay.
The regular minutes.
Yep, let's have 15.
Yep. Page 45, the Hall's Way comment, or in parentheses, that was...
Oh, you mean line 45?
Yeah, sorry, line 45. Yeah, not page 45, sorry. That was talking about the bigger lot and the smaller lot piece. So that should be either struck in or associated with line 46 where it talks about the bigger lot and the smaller lot.
Why is Hall's Way in there?
Right, exactly.
I wouldn't refer to it ever as Hall's Way.
Well, Hall's Way, that's the...
That's the other issue.
The other issue. There was two issues.
Okay.
So the Hall's Way should be another issue, Hall's Way in parentheses.
Right. So, I mean, we could just strike Hall's Way out of there and it's probably fine. And then my second thing is line 91. First word says manually. Could we just change that to separately? Because it's a... It's still done through a computer system, but it's... The two systems don't talk to each other, so it's just voters, new voters will still need to be done separately. My two changes.
And then on line 346, the meeting adjourned, it should be 8:45, not 8:55, because as soon as you closed the non-public session, you made a motion to adjourn.
What time was that? Sorry?
8:45 PM.
Yeah, it's like right a couple lines above.
Well, it has 8:45 to exit the non-public session, but you didn't do anything for 10 minutes in between.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July 15th as amended. Line 45, striking Hall's Way. Line 91, changing manually to separately. And line...
346.
346, changing the time to 8:45 PM.
Second it.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain. Tim DeAbrio.
Thank you.
See? Perfect.
That worked out. Non-public?
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes of July 15th as written.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tim DeAbrio abstain.
Perfect. Oh yeah, sorry, the joint meeting for the planning board is August 28th, not July 2.
Yeah, that doesn't matter. Knew it was coming up. Just... That's the date.
Oh well.
We haven't had a planning board meeting, so I have nothing to really report there. I was at the recycling center a couple weeks ago. Looks actually really nice and clean and they're redoing the steps up to the... What do you wanna call it? Yeah, the chute. So I didn't get to go there this weekend, so I don't know if it was finished yet or... Uh, to go into the compactor? We're redoing that. Think it's safer. It was old.
And also for the aluminum cans as well.
Oh, and the one for the little cans?
Going up to the aluminum cans. They're both being...
I didn't see that one when I was there, so... But it was nice to see that. It was nice and clean inside there. Well organized. The bins were ha... You know, they weren't overflowing, so... I think that's a good sign for the future for the place, so...
Great.
That's all I got. Anybody have any other committees' budget, rec?
Still pretty quiet in summer.
Few updates from the rec. To your point earlier, summer camp is over this week. So I don't think that's the end of... Officially, the end of summer for most, but... And then they're gearing up for after-school care. They are installing for those of us that have attended Nottingham Day in the past and went to the night out last year, installing a new Gaga pit.
A new what?
You know, the game they play with the ball and they hit it backwards, got like an octagon with the wooden walls?
This one right outside the door?
Yeah, they're getting a new one.
Oh, that's what that is?
My kids are so pumped when I told them.
I don't even know what that is.
Yeah, it's very fun.
Summer concert series are done.
What's that?
Summer concert series.
Summer concert series is done, yes. And the new pit will be ADA approved as well, so...
Okay.
A little ramp and a door to kids get in. That's about it.
We installed the swim lines.
Oh, you did. Nice. They do have 31 children on the waitlist for aftercare right now, so it filled up very quickly, so... Yeah, there's a huge demand for aftercare.
Will they be... I think hopefully they'll be able to fill those spots, or is it gonna be...
Well, right now they're at capacity. I know that Courtney and Richard are trying to figure out if there's alternative ways that they can add more children, but at this point...
One of which is relocating the program to this facility. So we're working behind the scenes, trying to get all the details ironed out before we can formally present it as an option. The aftercare program, we're having very preliminary discussion about having the program take place at here rather than the school, so then we could open up the enrollment and not have a waitlist.
How are we tra... Again, that's...
We're working through transportation to see if that's an option.
Okay, we can talk about that when it gets...
One thing I did want to bring up, speaking about like the departments, was whether or not, when I was looking at all the different towns for their recycling fees, when we were talking about that a month or two ago, is a lot of the towns have committees for some of these departments, like recycling, like I think it was Lee, Barrington, Northwood. They all have a recycling committee that kind of reviews how things are running and, you know, helps to communicate stuff to the town. Same thing with rec. They have a committee, and I know we talked about having a committee for rec from Marston, and I was just wondering if that's something we'd want to, you know, discuss maybe in another meeting, but I think...
We have had recycling committee in the past, but they kind of, once things got settled out or whatever, then they disbanded and then... You know, because there didn't seem to be a need at that point, I guess. But that was back when they changed the hours and all that.
Yeah.
So that was quite a while ago.
I always felt that committees were good for when we were doing major changes to get input on it. But to have a committee, I feel that, again, this is just my opinion, that would express their insight on what's going on there. It's just another avenue for more possible headaches or... You know, I mean, there's plenty of ideas going around how to improve the place. Obviously, the money's not there for it, but...
Yeah.
You know, what would the committee's function really be? If it's not to nitpick the thing to...
Well, I think it's to get, continue to improve, so are there ways, you know, for recycling that things could be done differently? And you have people that can, that might be interested in recycling and maybe generating more revenue that could do more research, bring it back to the committee, then could bring it to a select board potentially. That was just my thought. Again, we could talk about another meeting.
Yeah.
I think the one that we should consider really moving forward would definitely be a rec committee, where things at Marston are moving forward with the disc golf, but what the next steps will be, again, to... I know there's not a whole lot of money there, but if you have people that are interested in doing, you know, grant fund writing and things like that, to help move forward with some projects over there and rather than...
I mean, even if they don't meet regularly and just kind of...
Said right along, I think we need a recreation commission.
Totally different concept and idea, warrant article and all that, but I think that...
A group of townspeople that kind of view the recreation department, bring ideas, work with the girls and people in the recreation department.
But I think if you have people...
And work together.
Right, and people from the community providing input, and if they have more buy-in as to what they wanna see done, and then communicating it with the taxpayers and... Excuse me, Steve? Right. Yep, same idea. So, just a thought I wanted to put forward.
So you wanna move forward with a agenda? I don't know, like a meeting coming up? Talking about that?
Yeah.
Do you just wanna schedule that, Will?
Ellen?
Yes.
Yeah, it's nothing that...
So we wanna do both, recreation and recycling?
I was just giving you an example, because again, a lot of the local towns have something like that, and I'd be happy to research it and see what they do and look at their minutes and... But...
We just see two, if anybody wants, who wants to volunteer?
Right.
Not that they volunteers, it might just be a dead scenario though.
Yeah.
All right.
CIP meets next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks? Oh, two weeks? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the 18th.
Next meeting. Our next... Right, right before our next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Let it sound like me. Just kidding.
Just in terms of recreation, I think Neil and a few other people painted the shed.
Oh, yes. Yes, the town beach. I wasn't sure if that was before the last meeting.
Yes, no, that was...
Okay.
It was a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, no, the... And the, I believe, some folks in PLI went over to clean up and it looks great, so, thank you.
Yeah, the area looked a lot better than when we...
Yep.
At the beginning of the season, so hopefully people are enjoying it. Anything else? Before we move on to the Town of Ministers' report? See you none. Off to you, Ellen.
Thank you. Two announcements that aren't included on your report that I left off accidentally. I just wanted to give you a heads up, there is going to be a 5K October 6th here in town. It's going to be a cancer awareness benefit. It is going to be a starting and finishing point of the Highway Garage on Flutter Street. It's gonna go up Flutter, probably around Dwight, maybe once or twice, to Deerfield Road and then back. I have all of the department heads, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Health. I have just about everything wrapped up on it. They're working on the insurance. There's going to be porta potties. There will be an ambulance on site, and it's going to be managed through somebody that hosts 5Ks, so... It's the first person for the... It's the first event for the person hosting it, but it looks like everything's falling into place. So I'll be putting forward the special event license, and I just wanted to get your authorization to sign once I get the final approval from the department heads. Or if you wanna see it in the head, I can present it at the August 19th meeting, but...
Sounds like it's similar to the one that the rec was on, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, but it's just not going down...
And everything like that, they just basically...
Yeah, it's just not going down the Town Beach Road.
Yeah.
Trail.
No, I just said it's the same route that the rec would...
The rec 5K.
Yeah.
And then, just to follow back up on the no smoking and tobacco policy that was implemented at the last meeting, I was able to get quotes from both the Department of Corrections Print Shop and New England Barricade. New England Barricade came in about $50 cheaper overall. Initially, I ended up ordering 12 signs, which will pretty much cover a sign at each town property that has a facility on it, whether it's Highway Department Recycling here, the Ballfields, Marston, the Town Beach. So for 12 by 18 signs, they were custom, it was $300.76, and I found enough money within the each individual department's maintenance line that we can squeeze that in. It ends up being, I think it was like $25 a sign. So they're 12 by 18, they'll be visible, and we bought the posts and everything to get those installed. So they were just picked up by the Highway Department, I think Thursday, so those will be going up very soon here. No smoking. On any town properties.
Tobacco use, right? No tobacco use?
Yes, no tobacco use. The school and SAU door hardening and access control upgrade project that they received grant funding for was completed last week, and they got the programming for all the access wrapped up. Now there's key card access. Fire Department, Police Department, and the town all have access into the building, but it's a security upgrade. It's a more techie way for them to be able to control the access in and out of the SAU office and the school. So that is just about done. The trustees of trust funds continue to reinvest trust funds that will not be needed to be accessed this year into short-term CDs. I think I reported back in maybe like the tail end of the first quarter that they were looking to place... I think there was, there was a couple of larger funds, like the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. They're investing in two-to-three-month CDs, and they're getting like a 5% yield. So they're just going to continue to do that as they renew, as long as there is no need. The trustees are checking in with Betsy and I regularly, just to make sure that things haven't changed and that we don't have an immediate need. Fortunately, we're doing very well. We've, we've had them invest in the funds that we don't have a use for in 2024 as of right now. The 2012 Ford F-350 that was originally at the Highway Department, sent over to the recycling center and then had some major mechanical issues, as well as the 2016 Ford Explorer, which was retired from the PD, sent to the Highway Department and also having some severe maintenance issues. Both of those vehicles were put out to bid. The bid closing will be on August 19th. We'll do the opening at your meeting at 7:00 PM. I have that scheduled. Hopefully, we can get somebody to bid on them. One of them is not inspectable but still runs. The other one does not run and requires repair, so it's either that or the alternative would be to see if there's any salvage value out of them at a scrapyard. So that's last case resort, because that's gonna yield the least. So we're trying to get something back for them.
Is the F-350, are we just advertising the truck alone?
Yes. Yep, it's been completely stripped. It's a flatbed. It does have a spare set of tires with it and has a plow frame, but no plow. So it's just, there's no, there's no sander, there's nothing. It's just the F-350.
Sell that old sander?
No, no, we do not. And Steve actually wants to hold on to it.
Okay. I was just trying to think of how we can make that more marketable, to maybe package some of the stuff that we had that wasn't there and say, "Hey, look, you buy the truck, you can get this here too with it," or... And maybe build more value to a... To give somebody incentivized to, you know...
Well, I think that's change in personality. The prior Public Works Director said that it was not something that worked well because of the noise.
We don't... We're selling it, so who gives a crap?
The other sander, the one that we were gonna sell?
Yeah, the hydraulic one.
But we originally put it out with a truck, didn't we?
We put it out to bid, and then the bids were too low.
Yeah. But the president highway director can find a use for it, and he'd like us to hold on to it. Obviously, not holding on to it forever, not using it, but as an option. So speaking of the Highway Department, they are preparing at the end of this week for the replacement of the hydrant on Canard. Initially, this was a project that we put out to bid in 2023. It was awarded. The project was not able to get wrapped up within the timeframe that we were hoping. And at the time, we were extremely limited with staff in the Highway Department, so it wasn't something we could do in-house. Steve looked at it. It seems to be something that's well within their wheelhouse. They have the staffing to do it, so they're going to start preparations to get that replaced. It will start the end of this week, and then it's gonna take a backseat for a little bit while they do the leach field replacement at the Blaisdell Memorial Library. That's scheduled for next week while the library's on its scheduled shutdown, and that will take care of our failed leach bed issue over there. So that's going to be done in-house. It will be materials. There will be oversight by a certified installer and state approval, so...
Did we get our F, uh, new police truck cruiser, whatever you wanna call it, now?
I don't think it has been delivered quite yet. It's still being outfitted. It arrived, it arrived at Corponi, and then it was going to Ospey Mountain Electronics to get outfitted. And then they had to strip the rest of the equipment out of the old cruiser and get it transferred over, so I think it's still gonna be... I think Fon said it was gonna be a couple weeks after it arrived, which it arrived the day of the last meeting. The supervisor of the checklist, the town clerk, and the moderator all came forward with their recommendation to move forward with the purchase of a Dominion ballot counting machine that's gonna be supplied by LHS. I had reported that in my report at the last meeting. But they do require, the state is requiring that the board formally approve that purchase. So I'm looking for a motion to proceed with the purchase, as recommended, for the Dominion ballot counting machine supplied by LHS.
And last time that was... Do we have to give it a dollar, Mel? I think it was like 30.
The warrant article was for $7,500, and that included the...
The grant from the state.
Right, so there's a grant.
The grant is going to be used towards polling.
So we just have to approve the spending of the money?
You have to choose which ballot machine between the two. It's the Voting Works or the Dominion.
But we can use the grant for this if we want.
We can. But we can, but in reverse, we can't use the warrant article to purchase the poll pads.
Right.
So we can kind of reconcile things.
The poll pads are really expensive.
But we're gonna talk to the elections folks, the supervisor checklist, to have them give their input on why they're needed and...
So we just have to make a motion to approve the Dominion specific?
Correct.
Correct.
That's the only thing.
Not, not we're gonna take the funds, I'm just...
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
I make a motion to proceed with the purchase of the new Dominion ballot counting machine supplied by LHS.
I'll second.
We're gonna motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? None?
Perfect.
Perfect.
Next.
Okay. Steve has been, Steve, the highway director, has been looking for a brush chipper. Obviously, for years, we've kind of deferred the roadside maintenance, and we have a lot of brush and overgrowth that's making intersections especially, the visibility a lot less. So after the April storm, the Highway Department rented a brush chipper for a week, and they got accomplished what they could. It is one of those things that he would like to see become part of the Highway Department as a piece of useful equipment. So he's been looking at a 12-inch brush chipper. He's been looking at a bunch of different gas units used, anywhere from like the $10,000 to $13,000 price range, just to put out there for consideration. He did come across a used diesel, which will get rid of our, the woes with anything gas and ethanol related. Has an auto feeder, and it's set up just the way that they would like it. It actually retails new for about $80,000. So he was able to locate one for $23,000 and would like consideration for this purchase out of the Senate Bill 401 Highway Block Grant Funds that can only be used towards highway-related things and not part of the operating budget. So I'm putting that out there for you to consider. There is a balance in that Senate Bill 401 fund of $86,440.
We don't have it earmarked for anything?
We don't.
I know we, this communication that we'll talk about, since we're talking about the Highway Block Funds, why were they so much higher in 2020? 2023, we got like $195,000 and it's dropped from 2...
They always estimate lower. Are you talking about the other, the regular Highway Block Grant Funds that we...
This is different.
This is, these are the special ones.
Okay, yep.
So this isn't the regular quarterly allocation that we get, that's based on the miles of roads and the population. This is Senate Bill 401.
So we'll talk about that later, okay. I mean, given, I think it costs what? $5,000, $4,000, or no, it's like $2,000 to rent it for that one week?
Correct. And it was a manual feed, so somebody had to stand there, and if it got caught up, they had to pull it back out. So this one's an automatic feeder, so they literally put the brush in and walk away, and they can continue to grab and feed it as quick as it will accept.
Is that the sales pitch?
Yes, that's what I'm told. I'm not an expert in brush chipping, but it sounds good.
12-inch chipper is pretty big.
And if this is not the path that you wanna move forward, he's more or less looking to see if you would be in favor of going this route and what he might be looking at for a price point.
It's probably gonna need new blades or new chipper heads or whatever you call them, being used.
Yeah, I mean, the fun, you know...
They don't last that long, I don't think. Well, at least I know on the smaller ones, they don't.
12 inches is a pretty good size. 12 inches.
That's huge, right, those are...
But given the size of the branches that came down from the three storms that we had.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, that's...
Which are still everywhere.
It makes sense for a Highway Department to have something like that, and that's probably not big enough for everything to lead.
Right.
Big enough for anything you wanna put through a chipper, though.
Right, everything else you cut out.
Right. Hollowing.
Yep.
And at least when they do it, the material that they get out of it, at least, I don't know, we can find a use for wood chips more than we could probably for anything...
Right.
Just scrap. I mean, they've been, they were giving away the wood chips when it was like around, stuff like that, and people were taking that up and... Right, but it could be landscaping out front here and where we just put all the new trees down the road. It could be...
Yeah.
You know, it's a usable to... Material. I don't think he's asked for a whole lot, so if he's coming to ask for something that thinks he can do to help...
Piece of equipment that makes sense for me, to me.
I think it makes sense.
So the other, the other part that I just wanted to put out there, just because of transparency, we do have a purchasing policy, which this is over a $10,000 threshold, but we're talking about a used piece of equipment. So finding something comparable, we're going to be looking at, trying to find this, this piece of equipment for comparison.
Is it new? It's $80,000?
Yeah, new, retail new is $80,000. So this, I think he said it came from Windmill or Winrow, which is one of... So it would be coming from a dealer, but it's somebody within their service department that owns it, that's selling it through the dealership.
Does it really meet the intent of the $10,000 threshold?
No, that's what I'm saying. So I would be asking you to... Like, we can't go through the purchasing policy, because it's not a new piece of equipment. We can't put it out for bid and expect to find the same used piece of equipment multiple times.
We're not buying it from him, are we?
From Steve, no. It would be a purchase from the town to the dealer.
Thing is, we're not buying it from Steve, so I... I guess I'm fine with that. I'm in a motion.
Do we know how many hours to run the engine?
Yeah, I guess if he, if, maybe for our next meeting, if he just gets more details as far as, you know, if he's taken a look at the piece of equipment and feels that it will last, because it's an investment.
Okay.
This is something that he's afraid that if we don't move on it, we're-
Well, and that was the other thing. I mean, I was thinking about maybe if getting the feel for it tonight and then if it's something that we could possibly hold with a deposit until we can get all of the information. He still wants to go lay eyes on it.
That would be, you know, that's a good piece of advice right there to, if he's gonna drop twenty-three, like to see it, touch it, you know?
Start it.
Right, exactly. Say, hey, sure, go buy it and-
But I didn't wanna authorize him to put a deposit on something and then have you say, no, absolutely not, so that's why we're here.
I think the consensus would be right now, if, for the room, is that we're okay with it, but as long as that we, you know, he touches it, he sees it, we get a little bit more information about it-
Okay.
To make our minds at ease more that spending the money is worth for what it's gonna need.
Yep.
Okay.
So. He wants to send a picture to us or-
Blades out of it or something.
That's the thing, don't wanna spend that kind of money in the next year, spend three thousand dollars in repairs and pieces of equipment.
That with a piece of equipment like this, I'm sure there's a maintenance level that goes along with it, but-
Right.
And if you want, I can pause because it's seven o'clock and you have an appointment.
Okay. We'll continue the town administrative, uh, administrative report after our appointment. Our appointment is Mr. Tom Duffy. Please, come on down.
Good evening.
Just state your names out loud for us, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Tom Duffy, twenty-eight, Tuckaway Shores Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire. And I am here in my capacity as president of the PLIA. Neil Santos, sixty-three, Shore Drive, Nottingham.
Thank you, guys. We're talking about a potential grant for the lake.
Yeah, the good news is that I'm not here to ask you for any money. Pretty good, huh?
That is a good- That's a way to start off the conversation.
I am here to ask one of you to participate in a committee that would be a town committee with members from, that we've already formed in our Pawtucket Lake Association Committee to apply for this grant. Grants are given to the towns, uh, the six oh four B particularly. What do we want the grant for? Very brief history. In nineteen ninety-five, this was published. It's a diagnostic study of Pawtucket Lake and, boy, everything you ever wanted to know. It's in that book. Nineteen ninety-five. This was followed up in two thousand, in fact, in two thousand and six, uh, the PLIA and the town, four, and I think Bill Medison was the, uh, uh, select board representative, formed a committee and we applied for a grant to update the watershed plan. It produced this document, watershed plan. We received a fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, and GeoSynTech was the engineers on the plan. It further followed up on the findings of the nineteen ninety-five plan and suggested a more particular, uh, recommendations, particularly about limiting phosphorus in the lake. Phosphorus is a nutrient. It produces, uh, it eats oxygen, which is a problem. It's why there, we don't have any trout in the lake, for example, because we're a warm water lake. Uh, it produces lots of weeds and other, uh, other things. But the main thing is, is that it removes oxygen from the lake and eventually will kill the lake if there's way too much of it. So, um, the recommendations in this two thousand and eight study, they made several suggestions, uh, of which three or four were carried out. We still have issues. We're still on the border of only oligotropic and misstrophic. Basically means between a, a middle healthy lake and a dying lake. And, uh, and it's always, everything cites phosphorus as the result. Phosphorus comes in through many tributaries in the state park. It comes in from basically runoff. The lake itself produces phosphorus. It's called phosphorus loading, all those leaves and the sediment down there. Uh, there's, for example, when the biologist comes out with us once a summer and they measure the amount of oxygen at the bottom of the lake in the deep spot. So, we have a fifty-five-foot deep spot in White's Grove area and the first twenty-two feet from the bottom has no oxygen. There's no plants down there. It's nothing. That's just sediment. So, we don't, we wanna keep it low. We don't want it to go high. Uh, what happens, of course, in the spring and summer is that the lake flips due to temperature change. And when the lake flips, the phosphorus comes up to the top. This spring, we had a cyanobacteria event where cyanobacteria, which is a blue-green algae, which can make people and dogs very sick, came to the surface and was found in several coves. Luckily, it dissipated quickly, but because of the very warm weather and the lake flipped very early, this is what happened. So, in order to get larger grants from many different sources, to really start to get money to fix some of these large phosphorus contributors, we have to update this plan. It's fourteen, sixteen years old, sixteen years old. So, the six oh four B grant that we will be applying for in the name of the town is to get the money to produce an updated plan like this. This one costs thirty thousand dollars when, when as part of that, that committee debt. So, I'm here to ask for one of you to join us and that way we can, the town can apply, uh, will produce the writing. We have a, a team, Neil, of course, has been in charge of our milfoil program for, and successful, I think, uh, milfoil removal program for these many years. And he's also an engineer, so he can actually understand what these people are saying in these pages. Lori Nickerson, uh, is also a member of, of our committee and she has been, really, she actually began the effort. She saw that the funds were available and she immediately picked up the phone. Uh, she's, uh, very helpful in writing, uh, proposals and getting things done, so. We're very fortunate to have, uh, to have what we think is a moving forward, fast committee because September thirteenth?
Yes.
September thirteenth is the deadline for getting our, our grant application. We can do it. We have the outlines. We know what we need. We've talked to the DES. They are, uh, they are very supportive of what we're doing here. They know that we need to have the update of the plan. Who wants to play with it?
I can do it. I'll do it, Tom.
I just had a question. In the last study that was done, you said there were some recommendations, like who, what were the recommendations and what they-
Yeah, so, and, and, and what, what did we spend the money on?
Right.
So, um, what are the recommendations? There's not much you can do about the phosphorus loading in the lake other than, well, there's different kinds of phosphorus loading in the lake. But, um, in lakes that have really, really bad problems, they use something like aluminum sulfate. And, uh, there was a lake up north and that was eight hundred thousand dollar treatment, so. We don't wanna get there. We wanna get it before we get there.
And did that cure it?
What's that?
Did that cure the problem?
It did help it, yeah.
Just helped?
Yeah, it's a long process. It bound up the phosphorus that was sitting linked to the bottom of the lake.
Okay.
But still phosphorus comes in and so you can still have a continued problem, yeah. And you know, we, much of Pawtucket is bordered by old cow farms and some still active.
And under.
So, uh, but what, one of the, uh, one of the main tributaries, there are several that are, that are of issue, but one is particularly bad. We call it Fernal A and B because it originates up on Route one fifty-six, goes through, has the, uh, the, uh, the Fernal Farm runoff into the Batch Elder Farm runoff. There's sort of a valley there. It starts a creek. It moves across. You can see a nice green pond when you're driving up and down one fifty-six. That goes through what used to be two beaver ponds. Now, there's only one, uh, and it goes in, um, Barterie Lane. And that is, uh, fifty times more contribution of phosphorus than, than the others in that area.
Now, I thought your study showed that down at the boat launch was one of the highest contributors.
You know, it, it's the, that's the second, that creek.
Of course, the Fernal at the farm, they've eliminated that problem by putting in manure pits, not pasturing cows, and now-
That was the money that was raised from this. They got a grant to create a manure pit rather than spread it in the fields. That didn't extend to the Batch Elder Farm.
And now that's closed.
My understanding is that there's nowhere, but-
So, again, those problems hopefully have rectified.
Well, they're, they have begun to cut it down, but two hundred years of commoner and runoff in the soil, it's just, it's, it's gonna happen. And, you know, we don't know the very old history, but I've read deeds, being in real estate, I've read deeds of Barter, on Barterie Lane that actually have a right of way for farmers to bring their cows across one fifty-six to graze in what is now water, the funding. But prior to eighteen twenty-three, it was wetlands and grazing land, so. It's a, it's an old problem that we hope to, to start to at least mitigate, just like, like you said. What we did-
Probably nowadays, it's more beaver problems than anything.
You know, the, if the beaver pond, the beaver pond could actually be a settlement, a sediment pond. Problem is, is that, is that there's no separation. Whatever comes through, comes through. And a very big, we used to have two beaver ponds there. There's now one beaver pond. The other one collapsed during one of our rain events, Mother's Day, I forget when it was. But in, in any event, what we did in two, after two thousand and eight was, uh, we, we, the town, uh, restored the bank and stabilized the bank in that particular creek, Fernal A and B that runs through and empties into Barterie. You go there now, you'll see that there's one of those stone and wire, uh, uh, fencing, tiered fencing to stop the washout as it would come through and just scraping sediment off. Pawtucket Shores, where I live, at, it's basically houses on hills that converge into the beach area and it was just coming and running in, just going on. We created what's called a rain garden. Rain gardens are very effective in that they're basically a holding pond. It stops the flow, curtails the flow. The plantings that are in it are particularly absorbent of phosphorus, so the whole idea is to bind the phosphorus you, before it gets into the lake. And, uh, that was a big project. Uh, that was done. A smaller rain garden was, was done. We had a volunteer, one of the, uh, members of the PLIA volunteered dairy yard to demonstrate, so we had a small rain garden, about the size of you guys. And they did the bank work. Oh, and, uh, a, a boat ramp from one of the associations was stabilized with, uh, with gravel divisions. Actually, be stone divisions rather than gravel to slow down, otherwise it just, uh, just lost, basically. So, there are many, there are, believe there are five, there are four association and five private boat ramps, uh, that have been looked at for this. But, uh, many of them have been already stabilized. You know, we've been working on it in little ways for a long time. State park is something of an offender. Uh, they told us that as long as it didn't cost them any money, we could help out with, with what they did. As you know, they are using their ARPA funds to improve their septic systems and replace their septic systems, which was a big victory for Pawtucket Lake instead of putting in thirty-five new armpit camps. So, uh, you know, we're, we're making progress and we'd like to get this grant underway. And John, you're gonna wanna join our committee? Is that the volunteer I heard?
I would volunteer.
We could, somebody else wants to come in, but I know you're probably busy.
I'll be active, but that's, that's as far as I'll go for right now. Let's just say that.
Good. So, I will notify you of our committee meeting.
Who's drawing up the, uh, the grant?
As long as it's not Tuesdays.
Who's writing it?
So, so what we have to do first, well, we're doing, uh, essentially, I think that, uh, that Lori will, uh, will be one of the grant writers. I will be one of the grant writers. We'll collaborate on it. We have an outline. We have other grant applications. We know what to say and how to say it. We're going to have it reviewed by our friends at the DES, uh, to make sure that we, we've done it correctly. We think we have a good chance of getting it. There's a lot of people that, that are doing this, but fifteen, sixteen years is a long time for, for an update.
Would it been, I mean, in getting the grant, does it help that the fact that Pawtucket Lake has a state park on it?
I was just thinking the same thing. They have a vested interest.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, is that- It can't hurt.
I'm sure it doesn't hurt at all, but I mean, is that-
You wanna chirp in on the, uh, court? And re, in relation to the state park?
Well, just like, is the town, is like the state park manager actively helping or is being a participant in, in this grant? Because it's gonna benefit his park as well as a ben, I mean-
I think Tom summed it up very well, that as long as it doesn't cost them any money, they're, they're okay with it. We have a relationship with them.
Yeah.
You know, we found a lot of, uh, milfoil around the state park areas, the canoe rental and so forth. And, uh, you know, I mean, we, we used vaseline for last year in the lake. They stood up a nominal job in, uh, in cleaning up areas that were Town Beach Cove, for example, and the South Channel and, uh-
And Arbeach.
And, yeah, and Gozco. So, we really did a fantastic job and, of course, that was done with Larsa DDF, totally DES grant money. And they were all in favor of it, uh, and, uh, they've been helpful with us. They've decided that we'll shut down things like the canoe rental with, uh, milfoil is found in that area. So, they're, they're getting to be aware of their, their duty as a citizen of, of the lake to, you know, to help. But, you know, it's the issue of, you know, unless it impacts their revenue, they're, they're not happy about spending any money to help out. But, you know, they're, they're willing to contribute to their, you know, their-
How much grant money's out there?
We wanna do what's happening.
How much grant money's out there for this? I'm sure there's other lakes supplying for it, right?
There are, there are. This is, uh, I think that, that, uh, they say that the grants can be as much as a hundred thousand dollars, but, uh, there, there's so many people vying for it, it will probably be another thirty thousand dollars. Hire the engineers, do the studies, write, write the grant. Uh, they write this, you know?
How long's the process take to get that, to, after we get the grant money?
That was, that was a two-year process to get to this. To get, to go from zero to this, uh, was two years. We started in two thousand and six. We published it in two thousand and eight.
They told us it's very competitive to get this grant, but we've kinda gotten outside indication that, you know, we're, we're, we're well-considered, if you will, to not certainly get a-
They've already spent a lot of money on us and we, uh, have, have been testing the water since nineteen eighty-four, uh, very consistently. So, we have data, which they like because they, the data is already present. They'll, will act as additional testing. One of the things about the state park deciding not to put in the RV sites, but to, to, uh, replace and repair the septic systems in the park is, is really tremendous because there is something called groundwater seepage. And, uh, it's, we, we feel that, you know, the state park beach gets closed frequently, some due to high levels of bacteria. So, they're, they're learning and, uh, they've always, they're now very helpful to us. It's pretty much, we wanna remediate something that we find in the state park. We can do it as long as that doesn't cost them any money.
So, what you're basically looking for us right now is just our approval?
We wanna elevate to a town, you know, a town coordinated committee because the application's gonna come through the town. We feel that, that that'll get, that'll get us the grant.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your continued efforts.
This was an information meeting and looking for-
No, thank you. Tom, thank you for coming in.
We've achieved our goal.
Thank you, John.
And we'll be in contact. Well, obviously, we'll, you'll let us know how it goes.
You can read it in your spare-
Where is that? But, you know, I've never seen that book in my-
There should be a copy in the library. We had two or three. We kept one. I put one in the library, gosh, 10 years ago. Hope it's still there. I don't know if there are copies out there.
Conservation might have it. I, I think I've seen...
Conservation has it?
I, I think there might be. I...
Conservation's supporting us, of course.
Is that in this building, that book?
I, I think it might be. I think I've seen it when we shifted the conservation files from out back, but I'll double check that for sure.
Okay, that's what I was just gonna ask. Somebody from Conservation.
It's kind of our first collaboration with Conservation, which is nice.
The new one will be that thick, I'm assuming?
No, it'll probably be that thick if it's...
What do you want for a 30, Greg?
Actually, it's thinner for 30,000, because that was, what year did you say that was? 2008?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so maybe, maybe it'll be two-thirds that.
It's double-sided now.
Not even bound. It's gonna be electronic.
The first one was 95. I just put my father's name in it. Thank you, guys. You think so?
Somewhat interesting.
I said likely.
Not gonna for a plus on the... All right, we're gonna continue back. With the town administrator report?
Okay.
Where were we?
Action items number three. And I'm actually gonna make an amendment to the amount, because I just saw, I noticed that when I copied off the expense reports, it didn't carry forward my highlights, because it was a black and white. So I think they're too light for you to see. So what I've done is I've gone through the budget status reports up through July 1st. There's been several building maintenance line items that have hit the general maintenance within the operating budget that has caused those line items within the operating budget to go over. And we knew that they were going to be expenditures that would be reimbursed through the town buildings expendable trust fund, which the town successfully added 150,000 into this year. So what I did was I went through and I tallied up, and we can go through kind of like page by page. So the first one, which is page 86, is the Dane building maintenance. We actually had no money allocated towards the maintenance of that building, but we had a very tricky door lock on the front. There's only, I think, one or two keys in circulation that actually effectively opened that door. Other copies just have been horrible to get the building open. So we replaced the door lock on that. So that was $111.50. I'd like to have that added into the Dane building, the historical society of the Dane building. You know how you have a new lock on it now?
Yes, Steve, you know. Over here, in the parking lot.
On page 88, that is the community center building maintenance. The police department had a hot water heater that was added. We didn't have enough... What happens is a hot water heater is down here in the furnace room, and it takes forever for it to get up there. So by the time the, you know, they were running the water for long periods of time. So we actually added a small hot water heater over there to help, so that they can have it for showers and their kitchenette and everything. So that was a $3,590 expense. There was also sediment filter and toilet replacement that had to happen throughout this building, because we have hard water. We're Nottingham. That was a $4,200 expense. We have added keypad access to, we're in the process of adding it, I should say. So it's going to be one on the exterior door, the town clerk's office, the community room, which will eventually become the conference room, and then the two exterior double doors of the gym. Those are all key card access now through our existing system. So that was $4,925. On page 89, the SAU office. We had an issue with the sediment buildup over there. There was a water treatment system that was installed. And because the toilets were constantly running, we had additional pumping. So between those two, that is, actually, I'm sorry, the extra pumping was just standard. That's once per, it's supposed to be once per quarter. So it was the $6,400 water treatment system that was added to that building for the new heating system and...
It isn't working.
It is working.
Or is it making a difference?
It's not, it is now.
That's what I mean.
Yes, yes.
So the money being spent, we're, we're having good success in...
Yes. Other than the fact that the toilets are flushing.
And they're not running.
And, and, and they're not building up with sediment causing the internal components.
My other question was, how is our pest control going?
How is our pest control going?
See, we're paying for it, so...
We are paying for it. Well, we've, we've been paying for it.
As somebody that's in the office here every single day and...
There has been no presence. At the last check-in, there was evidence of a mouse in one of the traps out back, but we have not had any new evidence of rats. So we're hoping that with the buttoning up of all the perimeter entry points, that they're no longer able to get into this building and that we can keep them outside.
Vegetation helps too.
The bait stations are still being filled regularly, so they are around. There is still an attractant. I mean, we have a dumpster. We have food that's going in there regularly between, you know, summer camp and the food pantry. So there's always going to be an attractant. We have water source, but...
My, my question was more that the money that we're spending, are we getting?
Yes.
Is it benefiting us? Is, you know, is the issue from the, where it was a year ago?
Yes. We don't, we don't have them decaying inside the confines of the building, so that's the positive aspect.
That's, I think it's one here that it's working.
Yes.
Thank you.
And what would be page 90, we had the, the locks that were actually on the doors. We went through a keypad access up at the fire station as well. But there was still the locks that were active, so those have all been swapped out. So that was $533. There was electric heaters that were installed over at the highway department. This is in their break room trailer. And then lastly, on page 82, as we found that the leach field at the library was going into failure, we had some, we had to do the redesign, which was 2,600, some additional pumping, and when Bodat was out there to clear the existing line and, and keep things flowing until we could get the leach fields, there was that repair. So all in all, I, I was off a little bit on my, my original total, but I would request that you approve the withdrawal from the town building expendable trust fund for the reimbursement of these expenditures that I just outlined. They totaled $27,544.50.
Out of the total of the 150 we have, right?
Correct.
So we still leave the expenses here?
No, they'll actually be, yes. Yep, they'll be there for, but they'll be an offset when that
Right, okay.
money comes back from the trust fund. So it's, it's not going to show that these line items overspent anymore.
Right. But next time we have to spend, or we're gonna do this payable thing, can we have a balance of what's...
Yes.
So that we just know...
We, we had about $15,000 that carried forward last year, and then we added 150 in. So 165 less the 27,544. We can't, we can't withdraw from it without your...
No, I understand. It just...
The building, the town building maintenance expendable trust fund.
So do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I would like a motion. Because what that will do is it will authorize Betsy to request it from the trust funds, and she'll have to supply them with copies of all these invoices.
So what was the, that amount? All right, I'll make a motion to recommend pulling out $27,544.50 from the building maintenance expendable trust fund to offset the expenses Ellen mentioned.
A second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Nope. Do you have an idea of what we're looking at for other projects that are gonna be, that are gonna be coming up for like expenditures?
For the building maintenance?
Yeah.
And I don't foresee there being any. However, we had a lot of maintenance calls over the past month for our air conditioning system. We've had some condensation issues over at the police department.
Painting and the stuff in the year.
The painting, yes. Yes, those will be, those will be coming. We're not, we won't see the bulk of that until we start doing the room transfers. We're hoping, you know, summer camp will be wrapped up this week, and then a meeting with the audio video company to talk about upgrading equipment for Channel 22 and get that moved into the new space. So all of this stuff is gonna start falling in place, probably in the month of September.
And the, just out of this too, the back part of this building, we haven't paid for that yet. We're...
And that's out of the $50,000 Warren article.
Okay, that's all of that. Perfect.
And if you haven't been back out there, so we've already moved one, I can't remember if that's a 20 or 30 yard out back, but we've removed one dumpster, and they're starting to fill. They have the dividing wall in the rear two classrooms, that's completely gone, so that's all open space now. And they're working their way forward. They've had to disconnect the electrical as they've gone, and then pull the stuff down from the suspended ceiling and...
You see, it looks good.
It does. I mean, I was back there last week, and I was like, wow.
Looks all up in the house space.
As it gets a little bit cooler, they'll be working in there more often.
Oh, I'm sure. I wanted to be in there when it's...
I was trying, it was a Sunday, so I was trying to listen for creatures. Didn't hear anything.
Okay.
We have a lot of correspondence that has come through, most of which there has been response for the most part, or to see if you want to add response. I didn't copy all of the email correspondence in your packets, just to help save some paper.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go through them individually, or is there anything here that you would like to discuss? I'll probably have these added in from my report, just as kind of, just outline them within the minutes. Is there anything in particular you want to discuss?
Well, the election law training one, so most of them were pretty far away. There's one, there was one in Rochester last weekend. Like, should we all attend that, or should one of us attend and kind of recap?
I think at least one of you should, but that's up to you. I mean, you're all required attendance for the election, so it wouldn't be a bad idea. I know Sandy has attended a couple, Sandy Neff has, Sandy Dow, I'm sorry, has attended a couple of election trainings, and she's been kind enough to share the information with everybody for those that choose, but...
Because I could go to the one that's in Portsmouth at the end of the month, in the morning.
Okay.
Because I have work right there. But I don't, again, I don't know if everybody's...
That's a work thing that, you know.
I'm happy to go and update the board, if there's anything that needs updating, but...
As the election liaison, that might be a good idea.
Oh, yes, that's what I was gonna do.
All right. So are you gonna sign up, or do you need us to sign you up?
I can sign up for it. It's, actually, they didn't, you didn't even have to sign up. You just show up, it said.
Fourth one, Steve.
Oh, yes, Steve, would you like to update on your Nottingham, England guest?
Oh, absolutely.
You wanna see what happened first?
Okay, so we did, we received an email from the Board of Selectmen, PC email. A gentleman by the name of Steve Battlemuch would be, he is a councilman in Nottingham, England. And he was going to be making his visit to the States and wanted to visit Nottingham of the United States. So fortunately, I reached out. Steve was able to make himself available to meet with the gentleman, and we sent him on his way with a whole bunch of 300th swag and...
Hey, it was a great visit.
It was a blistering hot Sunday afternoon for you, Steve.
It was a nice long Sunday afternoon. He and his wife both came out. We had a great time. He was amazed at, one, how big a cars that we all drive out here. It's like, oh my God, you guys are insane. Of course, out there, they drive very small cars, roads very narrow. Amazed at how much property we all have out there. He says, you know, if, if you live in a house, your neighbors probably maybe, if you're lucky, three feet from, from your house. And so they all live in these very tight knit communities. If you've got a half acre of property, you're a very rich man, probably a professional football player or a wealthy politician, which he didn't fall into either of them. But he brought us over a nice little proclamation from the Lord Mayor of Nottingham, and I'll read it to you. It's greetings from the city of Nottingham. It is the pleasure of Lord Mayor of Nottingham to convey the warmest of civic greetings from the city of Nottingham, England, to the town of Nottingham, New Hampshire. Situated at the heart of the country, Nottingham's heritage is rich and varied. Our heroes are legendary, and our innovations have helped change the world. From well-loved outlaw Robin Hood, literally great Lord Byron, to the designer Paul Smith. Nottingham is a cosmopolitan city known affectionately as the Queen of the Midlands. We are proud to know that your town shares the name of our fine city. With warm greetings and every good wish from the city of Nottingham, please accept this as a token of goodwill and friendship extended to all who work and reside in Nottingham, New Hampshire. Signed by Councilor Carol McCullough, Lord Mayor of Nottingham. So Nottingham is well-known for the legend of Robin Hood. It's known for their premier soccer team, Nottingham Forest, which he presented us with a jersey signed by the team of Nottingham Forest, along with a certificate of authenticity. Nottingham Forest is their premier soccer team. He presented us with a scarf of Nottingham Forest.
That'll keep you warm in the winter.
Keep us warm in the wintertime. A little free magazine, much like our hippo. A nice little bookmark with everything on there has either Robin Hood or Stags, which they're deer in their area. They have one park that is open to the public. It has deer in the park, and at times, they become a little aggressive at times. So they might have a, a little encounter with deer occasionally. He gave us a little brochure, "Visit Nottingham." A little cover here with their, their Shia Hall, New Lead Abbey, Newark Castle, Southwell Minister. They got a windmill, Green's Windmill in town. Rutherford Abbey, Walton Hall, Highfield Park. So just a nice little wall hanging, anybody that's interested. Steve?
Battlemuch.
Battlemuch. Nice little postcard with Robin Hood on it. Naturally, everything seems to have Robin Hood on it. Little map of Nottingham. Of course, they're much, a little larger than we are.
I think he said the population was 300,000.
300,000. So I told him he was just a tad bit larger than we are here.
Do they have a stoplight?
You know, I didn't ask you if they had any stoplights. We're about to get out for a stop.
We might not get a stoplight. We could get a roundabout.
Oh, God, I hope it's a stoplight. And another little tote with a Robin Hood on the front of it. So they were out here for three weeks. They spent the first couple of days down in Boston, took a tour of Boston. Then they went over to Hampton Beach to see the eastern side of the Atlantic Ocean. And then they came here. They, they researched Nottingham, and this was one of the few places that had a Nottingham. And we had a nice visit. They went over to the Historic Society. We went up to the square, viewed that hallowed ground, and, and made a way over to the dairy farm. And I probably kept them here way too long, and they were headed for Weers Beach from, from here. And then from Weers Beach, they're going over to Berry Vermont for a few days, and then over to Niagara. over to Niagara Falls to, uh, take in the falls and then they're gonna fly to the west coast to take in the Pacific Ocean, so. He had a nice visit. He was, uh, assured me that we'd probably be getting a few more visitors from Nottingham, England. He was very. He's a counselor.
Is that like a selectman?
It is kind of like a selectman. He was very amazed that we don't really have any political aspirations in our meetings. They are very politically motivated.
Hi.
But yeah, it was, it was a great visit, so.
Well, thanks for taking the time to do this, Steve.
And we loaded him up with a bunch of swags and ornaments from the 300 and I did find a child's t-shirt with some Nottingham 300 on it, long sleeve shirt that I don't know where it came from, but, um, loaded them up with that. I had a bunch of banners that nobody picked up that we, uh, we bought and loaded them up with a couple of them. He was very happy with them. He's gonna hang them in their, in their city hall. And, uh, yeah, puck buck, you name it, we gave him, we loaded him up. He was even going through the little file in the, um, town office. She, um, deals with healthcare, so she had a visiting nurse pamphlet that she wanted to know she could take. By all means. Help yourself. So we, we had a nice visit. We took some pictures outside and, uh, yeah. It was a good time. Some of them were smelling like, um, some, some Nottingham fresh air.
Sure, that's.
The aroma from the dairy farm probably lingered with them for a little bit.
It was a hot day.
It was a hot day and, um, yeah. Gave him something to talk about on the ride over to, um, Weas Beach, I'm sure.
Did you want to leave some of that stuff in the?
I'm gonna leave it all here.
We'll put it in the office if anyone wants to see it or whatever. Cool.
Maybe put the proclamation up in a frame.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be something cool to do, just to. Alright. Any more, Alan, or?
Um, no, just going through, you know, general mail and other correspondence when we get to general business, um, Tracy Black, our tax collector, sent over an update on, um, tax deed inspections that were completed at the Cedar Waters. We haven't been in that area assessing wise, it's been, um, pretty much off limits. So we were finally able to get in there and do some updates, so there'll be some clerical stuff. We can talk about it when we get to that point. Uh, there was a request from the planning board, they're looking to, uh, yeah, they're looking to do a joint meeting with uh, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission and Town Departments on August 24th, pretty much to talk about anything. Uh, one of the things that we had carried forward from a prior meeting was to talk about the building permit fees, get Dale involved, but I figured this might be the appropriate forum to discuss that because there will be amendments that will be needed to both the zoning ordinance and our fee structure, so, um, I figured that would be a good time. I didn't know if somebody wanted to attend to if any of you had any interest in attending that meeting, you're gonna be there anyways, so.
What's the date, that's the?
It's August 24th.
So that's the 28th?
Could've just.
That's the regular.
28th is a Wednesday.
Hold on, let me refer to the email.
This is. 28th. It's on the planning board day.
I, I'll have to look at the picture.
It's the 28th.
Hold on, we're double checking, Steve. I may have wrote it down wrong.
I wanna say it's the 28th. I'm like 95% sure it's the 28th.
It's gotta be the 24th, it's Sunday, so.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
Then it's the 28th.
8/28/24.
8/28.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the regular zoning board, planning board, joint meetings, they're just adding more things to it.
Yes, they've opened it up to other departments as well to come in and collaborate. So that would be my recommendation. So if you have, um, I could see if Dale would like to attend as well to be part of that discussion.
I'm sure when our next planning board meeting, we'll probably get things a little more organized to what we're gonna have on general conversations about. Uh, so that all the committee members are, you know, everybody has an idea of what they're coming to talk about. It's not just getting everybody in the room to say hi. So make sure it's an efficient meeting.
Alright, I think that's all I have, except for two brief non-publics later.
Assessing. Evidence.
Oh, before we get there, I don't know if we wanted to talk about the water system approval at Marston.
Oh, thank you, Tim. Um, the public water supply, application for Marston to be able to activate the bubbler and use that as a public water supply, the well that's been installed over there, is finally in approved status. Uh, we did the initial water testing, we're gonna have to do, um, quarterly bacteria and annual nitrate testing as part of the conditional approval, but other than that, we are just waiting on the plumber to get it activated.
There was something you wrote in there and it said like 98 gallons or something a day? It was like a small number.
96, yeah, 96 gallons a day. So it is tied into.
96 gallons is gonna go through the bubbler? I mean, cause 96 gallons if we're in a water.
They averaged it out based on the consumption through the irrigation system and then just what a regular bubbler would be. So it's, it's on the, the total usage of the well. So it's being, we irrigate the fields.
We're irrigating all those fields with 98 gallons of water?
No.
A day. No, they don't run every day.
No, they don't.
Oh, so that, that's where, again, when you read it, you, it's missed, you know, if you don't know how we're using it, what are you, if like, when I read it, I thought, oh, the captivity is like 98 gallons a day and I'm like, well, we did a 500 foot well or whatever we did in the.
It's only used from April, May through like August, so when you're saying 98 gallons a day, times 365, but.
That's, okay, it's just.
Yeah.
The way it's written, it's not daily use for the whole year.
Yeah, so what we had done is when.
It's a transient supply.
We worked with Gary Carmon who installed the irrigation.
No, no, I got it. I'm just saying, when you read the report though, it's just, you kinda sat there and you're, you think to yourself that really, on July day at night, you're only gonna be able to pump 100 gallons of water?
Yeah.
That's, seems really not effective or not efficient. Yeah, you break that down for six months, you're not using, now it probably equals 500 to 800 gallons a day or whatever it is. Good. It just caught my eye, why I thought it was, when I read it.
So I think that's great.
It is.
Alright, let's move to assessing. Ready to go?
There was an intent to cut that was received today that I snuck into your pile. Uh, the other one that is listed on the agenda was the supplemental that was signed in between the meetings because there was more than 15 days between your last meeting and this one, so if you could formally approve that one, so we can put it through the meeting minutes and then um, the additional one that is in the signature folder.
So you guys, uh, do you wanna make?
For a motion to, uh, accept the assessment of map 23, lot 11, intent to cut.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next one here is an intent to cut, um, tax map 76, lot 1-1.
Where does it say that on here?
Block number two.
There you go.
So I make a motion to approve the intent to cut for tax map 76, lot 1-1.
I second.
I see, it's hard, my bad. Are we gonna motion the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's assessing. He's reading it now.
Oh, it's, it, it's not a lot of wood to be taking, it's a small one, so it's. Alright, our review of action items from last meeting.
We had the fee, um, policies. Anything else missing? Building permit fees, we did that, right?
We started the conversation, we're gonna bring Dale.
So that's gonna stay on as another action item.
Did we set a time when we were gonna meet with Dale?
Should probably wait till after that 8/24 meeting.
8/28.
8/28.
August meeting?
That joint meeting.
Yeah.
Might be more than.
Maybe the first meeting in September?
Yes.
Uh, we have to talk about that too, cause that's obviously every day we can.
Right.
So probably meet the, the week right after.
And do meetings back to back?
With a third. Or we could do it Tuesday, I mean.
It is a five month.
Five week month?
Yeah, I think we got five Mondays in that month, so we could.
Do the second and fourth?
We could.
And then?
That is.
That would probably work. I was wondering if that was a five, I thought it was a five week month.
Right.
Well, then that makes it. 19. Either way, you're gonna. You either have three weeks.
Before or at the end?
I think, I think last year you did it on Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday the 3rd. No bueno for me.
Because I'm, we're not messing up the schedule from the first and 3rd Monday of the month.
Yeah, I'd rather see it on Tuesday. Sorry, we can't make it, that's, it is what it is. Does anybody else make the 3rd?
I can make the 3rd.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I can make it, so there's four of us, so that's. We'll just move it to the next day, that way we can stay on schedule to what's already written, so we don't have to change things.
Where's the other ones? Come on.
Uh, okay.
Uh, personnel policy, John and I met to go over the revisions on Friday. Um, we're both in agreement and I know that we spent a lot of time on this last October going through it in work session, but there's still a lot that needs to be updated within the policy, it needs a rewrite, so, um, I think it's still gonna be a work in progress. We took care of the overtime end of it. Last year you took care of the grievance procedure end of it. I think for the most part, we can continue to schlep through, but we, we do need to, to work on it. So what I'm going to do is see if I can find, um, just a template to start working off of and then re-present it to you, now that we're in policy writing season. Which tends to be this lag between now and budget season. That really small one. So I would like to carry that forward.
Is there an intent to cut for the state in New Hampshire?
No, we got a notification.
Yeah, if you read that, that wasn't even gonna go to bid till much later. It was the notice of intent to cut in the future.
They're looking for a forest at this point.
They haven't even put that out. This is just a preliminary, they're going to be putting it out in the fall of '24, I think.
Correct. At the time of sale, you'll be notified as to the volume sold and successful bidder, who will be responsible for payment of the timber tax. So once they get through and they award their logger, they'll be the ones that file the intent on behalf of the state.
Tax deed inspection review. That was all those that you sent us?
Yes, so not the whole packet of town-owned properties, just specifically Cedar Waters. Uh, Dale went through and did inspections, he was able to get in touch with the new owners of Cedar Waters and got permission to go in there and inspect. So we've got several properties that are on the tax rolls going back to 2015. Past boards of selectmen have done deed waivers because of course, once we deed a property in there, we're subjected to any lot rent or applicable fees. And we also didn't have any idea what the condition of the buildings were. So Dale going in there was, um, a huge accomplishment, I guess.
When did he go in?
When did he go in? It was in April, I believe, April, May, June, June 18th, 2024. Um, that's when he did his memo, I think it was within that week. So he was able to find that of the 12 properties that are in lean status eligible for tax dating, um, most of which are vacant and have been for a long period of time. So we've been, you know, having an assessed value attached with a tax that we'll never collect. So Tracy's looking for some guidance on how to handle these properties, um, how to clean them up, how to get them off the tax rolls. I'd like to talk with Chad, but I think probably my recommendation to you is that we should probably do an administrative abatement for the properties that we know are now vacant, uh, because we don't even know, for the most part, we know from what they've told us that they've been removed as of 2015, so we're talking nine years of uncollected tax for a structure that probably wasn't there to begin with. The tax is strictly on the structure, it would be structure on land of another, so we're getting the assessment and the taxation for the land value, just not for the structure. So in an effort to clean it up, that would be the recommendation, but I would like to answer Tracy's question about what happens after we get to that point and there is zero, zero value, do they then become a site within the town's name or Cedar Waters or who? Uh, obviously if there's no structure there remaining, I don't know that we necessarily need to have the history of what was there prior, but if they ever improve the site again, it's easier than adding a new map lot identifier for that subject parcel.
One of our old reasons and behind this was getting a town person to be able to go in to assess what was actually there. There was strong resistance about letting people in from town to assess a lot, that's why a lot of these over the years got pushed off because we didn't know, we didn't know what was there. And we couldn't take, you take a picture, but you don't know the picture from where it's supposed to be or what it was. So that's why when Dale went, this is just great, cause now at least we got.
He was able to lay, lay his eyes on what was there, or in this case, a lot of which weren't.
So they, I mean, do they have some sort of special exception from the town to have all these small dwellings? Like, like.
Yeah, that's it, you gotta look back way.
Well, I, well, I know, but there has to be some sort of, because if I wanted to do this on my land, I couldn't, right? So.
Isn't this some, I mean, is it basically considered a trailer park almost?
Campground, I believe.
Seasonal. I don't know, I, we'd have to look at.
If it was a campground, then, I mean, you wouldn't assess.
Right, but they're, they're permit structures.
Right.
So.
If it stays there year-round and it's not registered, like an RV would be, then it does become taxable property.
There are some.
Well, the property's taxed already, you're saying.
The structure, the structure, whether it's a park model or.
Just like I'm taxed on my shit.
Correct.
There were suits on this in the 1980s that you might want to look up.
Oh, I know.
Okay. Maybe not everyone does.
And that was, that was with the father, not with the president, that was even close back even. That's a whole other story about something else, which.
There's a fair amount of systems there. I mean, that's camps.
I've never, you got me.
I don't know, it'd just be nice of, to understand exactly how it does work, so that in the future, we're not always guessing. And then, I mean, you've got how many people have passed away and been unfortunately dead for seven or eight years and who's responsible for that?
I just don't get how, like, she says to sell back to Cedar Waters.
What does that mean?
I don't get how we can sell something, like, there's not a structure there, so there's nothing there to be taxed, they already own the land.
So according to the tax deed, right, there's a, a, there's a structure there, but in order to get rid of the structure?
But once that structure is raised, then that deed is no longer.
So my question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So wait a second, isn't there a, a fee to raise a structure?
That was gonna be my point, is, so wouldn't they have to reach out to the building inspector to get that?
Those permits.
Right, and so I guess that's, again, all my question is, is about going forward with the new property owners.
Moving forward, yes, the, the, the building department is involved in the process. You'll see, one of them, um, map 23 lot 2-8, um, they actually replaced their structure. They went through the building permit process and Dale would not issue a certificate of occupancy until the back taxes were cleared up. So we're now able to clear, I think with open communication with. So we're now able to clear, I think, with open communication with the new owners, hopefully we can move forward and have more productive.
But how could they stop it, I guess is my question. Like, how are you able?
I don't believe they can expand beyond what there is already in place for sites.
But if they build.
We're not even sure what's there, though.
Right.
Well, now we are.
Well.
Are we?
I, go look for, uh, in our back and maybe you can find an actual plan that says lot A, B, C is on this little road or this little road. I've never seen one.
No campground map when you visit?
I.
It's not like you can go there for the weekend.
Well, you, if you.
But Cedar Waters owned the property and they.
They own the land. They own the land and it's like, think of it as a mobile home park. They own the land and then the lots and the structure that's on them is what's.
And the person's responsible for building their own structure and paying for that.
See, it's not how we would do it today.
I'm sure, so it's somehow, whatever they've got. I just, I guess I, I think it would be nice if there was some sort of.
Would be wonderful, cuz I guarantee you, there probably isn't anything around our planning board situation that is even close to being.
Right.
Do we even have mobile home, mobile park regs for?
Well, again, I don't know if it's, how we characterize it.
Right.
You know, we do look on the tax, we just call it the Cedar Wa, I mean, we don't say it's.
Yeah, they're not split into individual chunks. It's one parcel of land.
But this says it's tax map twenty-three, two, nine, seventy-seven. Like, it's broken out on here.
You have to go look at the tax map and try to find that line.
No.
Right, yeah, right.
It's just a number to identify it.
Yeah.
It's like their site number.
So.
What is, what does the fire department use or anything like that? Do they just get called in and?
They just use that outside.
They just see it on fire, maybe, and just, oh, it's on fire. Put that up.
Almost like the island the other day.
Right.
Has been plowed in the past, but it is no longer.
Yeah, that is, we stopped that, correct?
Correct.
Because they moved the out, mailboxes outside. The mailboxes were inside.
Yeah, let's. I just, whatever we have to.
Maybe we shall take a visit.
Whatever we have to do to clear it up, the best way we can to get them off the things is what I would say suggests to do.
Okay.
And just move forward. And then going forward.
Right.
I hope that we have a better conversation with the new owner.
I, I think we can.
Intent for the property.
Correct.
So that we can get it more in line.
Just let them know that any new structures need to go through the building permit. If they're raising or demolishing, they have to go through the building department and.
Right. I mean, I would think that we would, for these abatements, I mean, if the thing is gone, we should at least collect that fee for.
Who are you gonna collect it from then?
Yeah, the owner's gone.
And in, in half of them, they're deceased and the structure's been gone for eight years.
Yeah.
It's just, we didn't have any evidence of that, so we've been taxing something that hasn't been there.
Who tore down a structure?
That's the question. So that is, that, that's the other part that we need to communicate to the new owners because technically, it's a misdemeanor offense for them to remove a structure that has taxes due on it.
And I hope going forward that any new structure put on there is gonna have to go through planning or some sort of way, because if those aren't real lots of record, by any means, we don't know what's going on. You know, that, that could be a subdivision. That could be, I don't know what, you know. We don't allow it for anybody new to do it, even though it's old. So there's a lot of stuff into this, which could be a lot of detail.
Right, cuz he's not relinquishing his land. He's, he's allowing people to put a structure on his land through whatever permit process exists, or we just say. Or, or do you say like it?
That isn't.
Whatever falls down goes by the wayside and you're not allowed to put anything due on there.
Well, there's one lot that has a viable structure on it, right?
Yes.
I mean, one of these at the.
Twenty-three, two, seventy-seven.
Yeah, the twenty-three, two, fifty says it's a cabin with structural damage, no value. So I mean, like, like it needs to go away. And the next one, cabin beyond repair, no value. Mobile home from the nineteen sixties, no value. Park owner plans on demolishing. Okay, there's, the park owner's taking care of it because the person's gone or deceased or whatever.
But again, I don't know, again, this is a new situation. Is it allowed that if he demolishes it and they're cleared out, do we just eat the back tax, just eat it and say, see you later? Now it's wiped off. And whatever going forward, we can actually do it properly.
Yeah, that's, I think, I don't know.
You know, I mean, cuz we can go back and forth over and we can just continue doing what we're doing, just pushing down the road, or, or as a goal here tonight, or in the future here, is to clean this up so that we can start off with a fresh slate and not have this old baggage that's been hanging on the town for I don't know how many years, and then just clear it off. Because we're not talking about X amount of money and you're, you're looking to get something from a
estate that's been settled for eight years, six years, seven, it's not gonna happen.
Right. And who are you gonna go find to pay for it? Why would they ever pay for?
No, I agree. Like, we gotta get rid of it. But that sounds like something the planning board is gonna need to pick up and have the owner come in.
Future, any expansion, any changes or anything to the property, again, granted what their deed says, what they're allowed to do, I have no idea. There could be stuff specifically written into the deed that was given expert, you know, it says, hey, you're allowed to do this on that property. I don't know. Never read it. So this would be more research to find out what's for future endeavors that happen on the property.
But maybe Dale, as part of the health part two, could get just a map. Or maybe they have a map, but it seems like the police and fire.
Wasn't it updated for E nine-one-one? I thought it was last year. No?
Seems like we should have something.
I don't know. I don't recall those being on the.
No, I don't think it was.
Okay.
Again, cuz it's a gated community.
Yeah, if they would be open to some, providing us with some sort of maps, we know it's over there anyway, and then just, we need to figure out what we're doing going forward. But at least they're going to be applying for building permits for structures that are gonna be put on existing lots.
But we don't even know how to deal with it.
We don't even know what these existing lots is.
Yeah.
If they show up, the planning board, like, how, what are? John has the planning board member, what would, somebody comes in, I wanna build a two hundred square foot cabin, whatever the heck they're gonna build. Seven hundred square foot cabin or I'm pulling on a trailer? I'm pulling on a mobile home? Do you have to give a credit to pull on a mobile home?
I mean, this.
Or does it just go through Dale?
I mean, the planning board.
Well, you, I mean, again, where, where is the septic system? Where's the water? Is there no wa, if there's no water, no septic, unless they just have an outhouse outside, it's technically just a shed. And if you're over a hundred forty-four square feet, then you need a permit for your shed. But if you don't have indoor plumbing and you don't have, you know, any of all that stuff, then it's really not a house, technically, right? So, I mean, are you building just a shed? With a board party outside? I mean, is that, again, that, we don't, it depends what they come in front of us with. If you're gonna come for a building permit, you gotta have the building design, you gotta have, you know, all the, you have, all the stuff you have to come up in front, so. And then if we don't know the size, it's just called a lot. We don't know if they need setbacks. Unless they say the lot is, you know, two hundred by two hundred, here's your boundary, here's your marks, then it would be a lot, then we'd have a plan, but then we'd have a plan for the whole place.
But I don't think it.
I don't think you have any of that stuff, so I get.
No, I don't think there's setbacks, cuz it's like.
Yeah, it was in existence prior to zoning.
Right. It's a campground.
Right. Right now, it's really one piece of property.
With sublots.
Again, what are sublots?
Right. Just something made up.
We get more.
Yes.
Estriana? Thank you.
And I'm sure there's, oh, there's filing cabinets out back that had plenty of information in it. I think like.
The year-round residential.
Of just stuff, so. But that's a lot to get into, so.
So what do you want from us right now?
Um, I'm just bringing it forward to your attention that we need to obviously get some of these cleaned up now that we've had inspection access, so as we're getting ready, I, I think the tax seeding, or the, the leaning, rather, is going to be August twenty-third, there it is. Um, somewhere in late August, so eventually you'll be having properties coming forward that will be eligible for tax seeding again, so we need to keep this in mind. It would be nice to get these cleaned up before we get to that point.
That said, you know, no value, no value, no value.
We can have it updated from this point forward. It's what to do with the back history.
Right.
And there's other properties that were on there, if you guys noticed, that we should take aware of, uh, which I didn't even know we had. Waterfront properties on North River Lake that town owns.
But it's not accessible. Right. I thought we talked about that a lot last year. The town owns.
Ooh, it's one of those two of them. One thirty-five feet, one at ninety feet of front.
I don't think either of them are.
Well, I couldn't tell. We asked, this is the conversation I had today was, I need to actually know like what road it's on.
Right.
So you could actually, somebody could take a look, cuz.
I circulated that information so you could have an idea of everything that's in the town's possession right now, including the land and the buildings that we're occupying, but you know, we can start that, we'll start to have that discussion in August to determine if there's any, or in August, on the nineteenth, um, to determine if there's any maybe prior tax-deed properties that are now eligible to get back onto the tax roll and whether or not you choose to.
Sell them.
List them or put them out for bid or however you, I mean, there's several ways that we can put them out there. Seal bid, auction, real estate. So, um, yeah. We'll go through and we'll clean up that list and determine what's actually tax-deed versus, you know, conservation to keep, to be kept in perpetuity and town-occupied. Uh, no, we're just talking about town-owned properties in general.
And we just wanna make sure town-owned properties that we own, it's listed that the town owns it and there's something on there that says this is town property, I think in future, so that nobody can be trespassing on it or nobody could be, you know, trying to say, well, I've been using it for thirty years, adverse possession, and start to go with a fight for the town over something that we own. You know, that's people own. So it's something that I think we should definitely keep our eyes on and at least make aware that the town is aware that these are the presence of Nottingham Town property. Which we have to find a use for or get rid of it, cuz we don't need to own property for.
No reason.
For nothing, we don't need to take the money to do something better for the town with it, so. But those are two that just jumped out at me. I was looking, there's quite a few on the, yeah, the thing, so. But, yeah, we could break down that list, just stuff that just doesn't list, you know. Like, we know the highway department's town property, we know the police department's town property, the fire department. So more of like, hey, these are the vacant lots that are over a year, 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 year. And these are why we're gonna do it in the past. There could be a deed issue for the work, and that's why we're trying to sell something off there, as Freeman Hall wrote. So deed issues were, were extensive. Um, so it made the property really unmarketable. I think we did get rid of it though, but.
The one a quarter of Freeman Hall and.
Yeah, that one there.
The one's for sale now?
This, okay, good.
It's been for sale forever, but.
Yeah, exactly. So that's what I mean. So, but we should know all that.
Not our problem. But not our problem. Somebody else is selling it forever.
Right.
Anything else, anybody?
The one thing I'd maybe like to put on an agenda in the future is to discuss maybe creating a town Facebook page, just an official town page to communicate things more efficiently to the public about whether it be just a meeting, recycling center being closed.
Can we make it a no-comment town Facebook page?
You definitely can.
So it's just informative page, not a?
Similar to like the school board, other towns have them, but the school board has one and, yeah, you can not allow people to comment, you just make a post. And it wouldn't be, I don't think it would come from the Board of Selectmen in particular.
And that's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's like, right, who in the town office is gonna?
Who's gonna maintain it.
Maintain it, because it's just something else that needs to be kept up.
But it's just a matter of, I mean, if there's a meeting, it's getting posted there. If there's something going on, it's getting posted, just like anything else that gets maybe posted to the website that people seem to not go to for information. It's, it seems that there's more people on social media than will actually access the website.
But you say social media, Facebook's only capturing one piece of that.
Right.
So are we limiting?
I don't wanna do an Insta. Or a Snap.
There is a really complete list at the town beach itself, which has, says what it, what it's committed and not committed. There's a step towards that.
What?
There's a list on the shed at the town beach that could be, could be there when.
Oh, that's not what I'm referring to. See, I'm just talking about communicating.
Something totally different. Okay.
Yeah, but just, we get to have a discussion, but I.
No, no, absolutely. I mean, to, you know, transparency is what people seem to be looking for. So the more transparent we can be, if that helps.
Sometimes it's just information, and they'll be asking instead of getting the information from somebody who might not have all of the information.
And, and, but there's things to that, so if you do one, like Ellen was saying, you know, do you have to do some of these other ones? And some of them, they will feed off the other, like Instagram and Facebook kind of like, you can post once and do both.
Yeah.
I don't, I hate social media personally, so.
And I'm not talking about getting out there to get involved in a discussion with people. It's just more, again, to provide.
Yes, a, a page for people to follow.
Right.
I mean, it's, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I would wanna make sure that we have staff on board to support it and.
I mean, it takes all of a minute to post something on Facebook, but.
But that's a lot of minutes.
Well, it depends how much you're posting on it, right?
And I think we could, I mean, I could ask other towns what their policy is and what they, you know, post on it and get some ideas. I'm happy to do that, but just an idea.
I'm not opposed to it, just, again, you know, there's.
Madness.
Yeah.
If it doesn't get updated, it's a debt.
Right.
Has no use.
It's Nottingham. England have a Facebook page.
They do.
They probably should. They have three hundred thousand people.
People from Nottingham and Hampshire from post stuff, stuff for sale on it, so.
As long as it's not misconstrued that it's the official notification, I, I mean, that's, we pay, we paid money to develop a website and that's where, you know, our, our legal posting requirements are two public locations plus a website if you have one. So as long as it's not misconstrued that that's the source for the information, that's been, you know, it's the one bone of contention is just that, yes, everybody can go and post a question to Facebook and get a hundred responses, whether they're right or wrong, when it's, you know, just as easy to go to Nottingham-nh.gov and say, hey, there is a planning board meeting on the twenty-eighth, not the twenty-fourth.
Go ahead, just type in Nottingham, just press click here and that's the homepage.
If you, if you just click on Nottingham, you're gonna end up in England.
Is the dump closed? You know, how many people post, is the dump closed?
Right.
All right, so.
For discussion.
Yep, for discussion. Like I said, I wanted to just.
No, but this, so, you know, thanks Tim for bringing it up, because again, it's something that we should discuss, cuz this is another thing that might be beneficial for the town. You know, hopefully it won't be.
If it doesn't work, you just take it out.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't take long to start a website.
No.
So. Well, if you wanna spearhead, I don't know if you guys care, cuz I'm not going to, but.
I'll look into it at least, just to see if towns have policies on how to do it and stuff, cuz I know some of our communities in the area do it, so. They must have policies.
We have our agenda for next meeting. We went through a few action items for next meeting. A review of action items for next meeting.
We'll have the bid opening for the two surplus vehicles.
Thank you.
Continued discussion on building permit fees and policies.
Yeah, if we're pushing that out too.
Yeah, we're gonna push that out until the September meeting. Okay, so I'll just move that down to the nine-three meeting.
That's the one I can't be at.
Well, we probably won't do much but recap on the joint meeting anyways at that point. Any fees need to go through the public hearing process, so there'll still be room for discussion.
Are we going into non-public?
Yes.
Okay, before we go to non-public, guys got anything to say? Going once? Oh, yeah, sure, I'm still gonna lay it on the table, whatever for you. Um, so we see no public comment for tonight. Uh, we will be going into non-public right now, and once we're out of non-public, we'll automatically go to recess the, uh, meeting, uh, recess, but to close the meeting. And thank you Nottingham, and we will talk to you later on.
Make a motion to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, two, C and M.
Motion to go non-public. We do need a roll call vote.
Second.
Sorry, the second, yes, roll call. Sorry, the second, yes, roll call vote, please.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Tim DaBrio.
Hi, Asher.
Good night, Nottingham.